It is six o'clock and I'm gonna open the meeting of the board of selectmen. If I could get somebody to make a motion to waive.
Wait one second.
Clock eye.
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? Alright, we'll start out with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free and just as for all. Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the Treasury warrant 22W-12 and payroll 22PW-12.
So moved.
Wait one second.
Any comment? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye excluding any COA wages? Alright. Approval of the minutes, I don't know if anybody, if you want to do this as a group or individually, because we have, oh, is this something, okay. We'll have to do individually. So the first is November twenty ninth.
So moved.
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? And December sixth. Uh, there's two, there's two, December sixth at five thirty-three.
That was the Wood.
The Wood, the Woodhouse.
Motion to approve.
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? And December sixth, which was the combined meeting with the BiLAC meetings, at BiLAC meeting.
So moved.
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? And December ninth.
That was the accessory test.
Yeah.
Motion approved as written.
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit of state?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? Alright, do we have anybody here for open comment, public comment? Nope. Alright, uh, we don't have any department heads here tonight giving you reports, correct? So we will go right to the town administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm gonna go through a couple of quick points of various things. Uh, Wednes- on Wednesday, December fifteenth, the Rutland Historic Commission is planning to meet at six fifteen in the Selectmen's Room at the library to put together a more specific plan for preserving the prison camp, uh, rooms, uh, site in town, so they're obviously inviting everyone to come and attend and give their comments about that. Uh, that was the project that we got state funds for, so, uh, I think they're looking forward to develop specific plans to, to see how they're gonna move forward with that project. Uh, the balloon test for the tower has been rescheduled for this coming Saturday, twelve eighteen, from nine o'clock AM to one PM. If there's inclement weather, they will do the test on the nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first, whatever day allows them to do it weather-wise. And then Tamika's updating like the ZBA page, the website, and keeping all of that, uh, up to date, so everyone knows when it's going to be. The contractors have begun work on the woods building roof, I talked to them at the site, and they said they would be there for the rest of the week. So far, the underlying roof seems to be in good shape. Uh, they are looking at certain places for, uh, you know, near the chimney and the windows to, to, uh, make sure that there's no leaks there, he feels really good about that, but he was pretty pleased about the condition of the underlying roof. Joe's working with them for quotes for the rest of the work, it's still gonna have to go out when we look next year at doing the other half of the roof, it's still gonna have to go to bidder off the state bid list. The school system roundtable.
Just a quick, did Joe take a look at the garage about any patching or anything?
He did go over there, I don't know what the result of that was, but I know that, uh, uh, he went over there. Um, the building inspector had gone over there too, and he looked at it and had some concerns about needing wood under there, so, um, as you know, things kinda changed, so I don't know what the outcome of that's gonna be.
Right.
But the, the, there is some issues with the wood in that, in that part of it. I know Joe was gonna originally send his guys over to look at it, so I, I kinda don't know what happened because of whatever happened on Friday.
But if we can get a, you can get a follow-up from Joe.
Yeah, I'll follow up and see where he's at with that, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, as you know, uh, we had the, uh, roundtable budget discussion with, uh, WRSD on Thursday, December tenth. Um, we had representatives of all the five towns that were there, uh, Selectman Benoit was there as well as Darren from the Finance Committee, um, I think there was another Finance Committee, um, Ted, I think, was there in the audience, I believe, as well, right?
Lynn and Care- Lynn, Ted and I were there in the audience.
Oh, okay. So, so anyway, um, the result that I read into the record, the letter that was sent to the School Administration and School Committee, signed by representatives of the various Select Boards and Finance Committee, is remember, four of the five, five towns signed on to that, the only town that didn't was Sterling, but the two representatives that were there from Sterling both spoke in favor of that and said that they had no issues with it and that they thought it was a good idea as well. Um, there was a lot of discussion, by Holden had a, a sort of a PowerPoint presentation on, on their budget process, uh, but I think everybody agreed it was, uh, very positive. I'll say this after the meeting, a number of people came up to me and was very pleased with, uh, the presentation I made and the comments that I made about it. Uh, the superintendent said he couldn't promise two and a half, but they're gonna consider it and they're gonna work on it. I know there's been some discussion, um, one of the Select Board members, um, I think it was Ted again, suggested that, uh, perhaps the Select Board and the Finance Committee would wanna meet with our school board members. Uh, as you recall, I did that last year, I met with them, I think I'm gonna, it's my intention to do it again, but if you guys wanna do it, it's not a bad idea. I think it would be another way to enforce, uh, how strongly we feel about the two and a half, so if you guys are interested in that, I'd be happy to work with you to arrange that meeting. Uh, I think it's really, really good. Um, so I thought the meeting went as well as can be expected. Um, the newspaper, I think, is gonna be doing a story on it this week, basically what happened at the, at the meeting, so I think the public will get a sense of the feeling of all the different towns on this issue, and I think that's good, the public has an understanding of what's going on with that, so. Um, starting, uh, meetings with the unions, I met with the police union, um, it's gonna be, um, I think the negotiations are gonna be positive, but it's just an introduction meeting kind of thing, so, uh, that's the beginning of the process. Department budgets are in the process of coming into my office, I've been kinda moving them to, um, the master spreadsheet as they come in and, and the departments are updating all their narratives and getting them as well. Uh, there'll be a lot of work on that over the next coming days of, of putting the budgets together, and then I'll be establishing meetings with all my departments to go through the budgets individually with each department head. And then eventually a formal budget will come to the Select Board and to the Finance Committee, uh, once it's, it's fully established, um.
Just on, on the budgets, I mean, I, I, just make sure with the board, I assume we will just keep ours flat, as in the past, I don't see any, any increases or changes in our budget.
The only thing that will change a little bit is Tamika, her salary shall reflect a two percent increase, but other than that, I'll take care of that budget for you.
Okay.
And get it squared away, but I, I, I understand what you want, I gave, I wanted you to have the option to consider it, so I sent you the copy of the budget and the narrative. Uh, really wasn't expecting to do much of the, do flat, but I can do that for you if you're okay.
We, we talking about going to the, um, is it the MI, MIA?
MIA.
Yeah, there's some funds in there, I actually sent the chairman, uh, what funds were there, and asked him to kinda coordinate with you guys who wants to go and not wanna.
Cause I know that Leah and I spoke about them, so.
So there's two things, mostly, I'd say there's money enough there to go to the conference, I'm not sure there's just enough money to go to hotel nights, overnights, but I think you have enough money to go to conference, so.
Well, my intention is that, I mean, I don't take a stipend, so I would just move that into, as long as the Finance Committee.
Well, we would have to do that transfer at the end of the year, in the last couple of months, but that's, that's worth.
Right, right, but the money can be used towards, towards that.
I, I think it'd be fine if the Finance Board agrees, cause they have to vote and transfer the last quarter.
There's one less member on the board as well, so there's some money in there if people wanna go, I would just, you know.
And truthfully, I think it's great, I think the board should go there, I, I, some board members go in the various towns I've been in, but it's not as many as they think should, cause I think it's a very positive meeting. And you'll find it very educational on, on issues anywhere from capital improvements to budget to legal, I mean, there's a lot of key topics, so I think you'll find it interesting. But let me know if, if you need my help, I'm more than happy to help the board, uh, make those arrangements. Department head meetings, um, as you know, they've been kind of ad hoc and, um, normally I have department head meetings every month, at least that's been my history. Up until when I came here, we had the whole COVID thing and department heads didn't need, and when we did, it was on video chat and Zoom, but now they're officially set up to where the last Tuesday every month we'll be meeting, uh, and then if we need more meetings, we'll have more meetings, but they're gonna officially start the last Tuesday in January. I told you a little bit about this, but Carol Wickett, uh, a Rutland resident, is our new administrative assistant in the accessories office. I told you we're extremely lucky at the last meeting together, uh, extraordinarily qualified, extremely smart, doesn't, has never been an assistant to a, a assessor before. But knowledge-wise, this, this is a real, a person who I think is extremely strong and will learn very, very fast. She's a, she actually was working on major project teams, multi-million dollar projects and, uh, is a skilled software configuration manager. Uh, so she knows how to work on project teams, very IT, comfortable with websites, all that, so I think she'll be an asset not only to the accessories office, but also working on the IT stuff with the, uh, Town Clerk's Office as well. So she's actually starting tomorrow on the part-time role, it's twenty-eight hours a week, uh, so I think, I'm really looking forward to her. Uh, Amy, the person who is our RRG, uh, person, uh, interviewed her with me and we're both kinda, before she could walk out of the room, we wanted to offer her a job, it was that kind of a thing, we were just unbelievably surprised at the quality of the candidate, so that was good. The Economic Development Commission, the first meeting of the Economic Development Commission is scheduled for January fifth, at six PM at the Rutland Library. I had tried to do that at the end of December, but I found a lot of members going, can we wait till after Christmas and get through the holidays? Um, so we've built up a really good team, we have one potential candidate, uh, that I'm waiting for a letter of intent from, but so far, I'm really pleased about the quality of that board. I've sent them all out, that Rutland Economic Development Presentation I gave you guys, so they have that, I also sent them out the charge of the board that we voted on for, so they're well informed as to what the board's going to do. Uh, and then I'll start the meeting with them and kinda set it up for, you know, them doing organizational meeting to pick a, a chair and vice chair and a clerk. Uh, and then I thought it's probably just to go through that presentation, just for opening up discussions about economic development, and talk about the potential use of ARPA funds, uh, for economic development, so that'll be another issue that we'll have some brief discussion on, but this is kind of an introduction. Get everybody immediate, be sure, I'm hoping it's not long, but it's gonna be, I think, a positive start, uh, I think they have a good foundation to work from. Eventually David will add, you know, like the, the Town Center Study and all the other things that they'll be able to look at as well, so they can make a well, they could see the whole town in various stages to, to make decisions on how to move forward. So that's the, um, blitz for this evening, Mr. Chairman, I hope it was informative.
For the chair? How do we stand on Rutland Heights?
So Rutland Heights, the, and I think it hasn't changed much from what we talked about.
There was supposed to have been an answer December tenth.
Okay, so, the last conversation I had with Michael was probably about a week ago, Michael Sullivan, the Chair of the RRG, I say. And Michael said that the new project manager was moving very rapidly to develop, uh, a more specific detailed plan, and you're correct, he told me it would be in December when we got it, but he's not.
Well, he said December tenth.
Yeah, he has not given me anything since then, so I'll check.
I think we gotta push on it.
Yeah, I'll check with him and find out, really what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a detailed project plan ready, because we wanna get to the closing, that's what we wanna do, and get the closing moving, so uh, we could get the revenue from the closing, also that kinda locks in the sale of the property and we're done. So I will let you know, I'll, I'll check with him tomorrow and get back to you in September.
Has the committee met recently?
No, they haven't.
Um, I was at the last meeting, it's gotta be, what?
It's about October?
Yeah, we met and they, you know, they might gave an update kind of at that meeting, uh, but he hasn't given any recent updates lately, so.
But when I spoke with him, we had talked about him coming and presenting, uh, talking to the, the board in January, so.
Yeah, that's good, we can send him up for the January meeting and get him on the coming, bring him up, yeah.
Get an update on that.
I know that he told me that this new, uh, engineering firm was top quality, very informative, really trained to develop plans and stuff, but to Skip's question, I think we need to get him to come in and talk more about that.
Anybody have any questions or? Alright, thank you. Alright, renewal license renewals. Anthony's auto. We'll start down this end, thank you.
We have notes from both, from Chief Mike and Chief Monaco that everything is good, so I'm not missing the lease chase this time. I just didn't read it last time.
New book?
Yep.
There we go.
So we sign these and return them to the Town Administrator Secretary and then they'll get it back to you.
Oh, thanks, so you just want me to just wait until you're?
Oh, no, no, so, so we'll, we'll bring it back to her and she'll get it, get it to you guys.
Okay.
So you, but you'll get your book back.
Okay.
So you want a motion?
Can I get a motion to approve?
Approve Mel's license for renewal.
Do I have a second?
It says Anthony's auto.
Oh, it's Anthony's, I'm sorry. Mal hasn't even gotten up yet.
Sorry, Anthony.
Anthony's. Do we do have a second? Do we have a second?
A second?
We'll look quick, if she finds anything interesting. Okay, roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? Thank you. Alright, next is custom fa- uh, fabrication auto body. Hi, thank you.
There's a, um, an accord sheet from the page, I think they, I think for liability insurance.
Did you wanna leave the liability insurance sheet with us?
Yeah, thank you. Make sure we take it out.
Put that on the signs.
Yeah, thank you.
Cutlass, wow.
I'm sorry?
Cutlass. My grandfather always had them growing up, he just made a comment.
Motion to approve custom fabrications license renewal.
Second?
Second?
Always putting the end of pressure. We have Mal come up, we'll go the other way.
We can go.
Alright, roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye? Thank you.
Thank you, enjoy your night.
How you doing?
Looking good, so.
I feel like usually when we do these, it's like storming and there's like snow on the ground and everything.
Shh.
Not like almost fifty degrees.
BMW.
Now, this is a mistake, I remember doing that the last, right, we did that last time.
No, but, um, um, in a note, um, Seth said, that's from the last time.
Seth, and then he mixed up a bit on Hall.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve Mel's license for renewal on.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Alright, roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoit eye?
Wait one eye.
And Nichols eye?
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thanks.
Guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Yes, you too.
Alright, make our license. And we have one tonight, Joseph Carr, Bedrock Golf Club.
And, sorry, I'm assuming that that's in our books, so it's good to go, I just am not seeing any of the doc, any documentation or anything in my packet, maybe I'm missing out.
License. We have a license here, but I don't see anything in the book, in the book.
I can see it in the.
Doesn't, on my agenda, it doesn't say like who, it just says, two licenses renewed, I, I don't, I mean.
I don't believe we had it, it wasn't in our PDF side.
Oh, I was, I don't remember seeing it, but I, I missed it. So should we hold that one alone?
Yeah, I, I don't know, Ron, do you know what the status is on this one?
I just know that a lot of the ones that she put in the book went through the various departments for approval, uh, but, um, I don't know if she, normally she puts those, what, those documents on the departments in the budget, in the packages, which is.
In the package, yeah.
Yeah, I know that, she doesn't put them in the book until they've met and all the departments have signed off on it, but I don't know, she just forgot to put those, those there. Um, I see the sign-off of the auto dealership, but I know you're right, I don't see the sign-off in the departments on, on the golf course. But that's the stand, that's the standard process.
Did I make a suggestion, we hold it till next meeting?
I don't think it's a major problem. Do we have anybody here anyway from there?
No, I don't, that's why I said that.
Yeah. Contract with Need Media Systems regarding cable television equipment purchase.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This, as you know, during the, um, time meeting process, we had approval for a list of cable equipment, uh, from the pub, public access TV station. Uh, the, uh, Chairman of the Public Access, Paul and Peter both worked and I, we developed a request for quotes and developed a scope of services for exactly what equipment was put out, it was put out for a quote, which is a requirement on the procurement act for the dollar amount we're talking about. Uh, we came to a conclusion and drafted up, I thought it was a pretty good detailed scope of services, uh, we got two bidders that came back. This was the lowest bid, both of the two bidders did meet the required specification as developed, uh, both of them came in and this was the lowest bidder. Uh, also, the, uh, public access is familiar with this company, they dealt one in the past, so they have a lot of experience with them, so overall, they were very, very happy. This just, uh, is the recognition and approval to sign a contract, uh, for this equipment, and they, originally, it was almost like a quote document, and then they sent us a second document that was more in contract form, uh, the chairman reviewed it and agreed, we both agreed that it should come to the Selectment for a formal vote. The actual amount, uh, of the contract is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
And this is being paid out of the cable?
On the, the, the. The PEG Act, yeah, PEG access.
Yes, this has been, but this is a budgeted line item.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I may, the gentleman from the company is on too, I don't know if you want him to.
Who's in there?
Mike Reitinger is in there.
Oh, he's the company guy?
Does anybody have any questions or anything?
I.
I, I. Forgive me, Peter.
No problem.
The equipment is not included in this, am I?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes, the, the thing that's called the Elite Two, the Tricaster Elite Two is the equipment.
Okay, cause it's just says here that.
I haven't seen that contract, I only saw the formal.
And this is, this is all the, yeah.
Install provided equipment is what it says.
Yeah, it's, it's the equipment and the installation, it's the whole package.
So what will happen is that they will order it on our behalf, we'll pay for it, and when it comes in, they will perform the installation of the provided equipment.
It's new, it's called a New Tech Elite Two, twenty-seven thousand nine ninety-five.
So, so you are paying for the equipment outside this contract, you just, you'll get the equipment, they'll install it?
Yeah, again, I haven't seen this contract, so I can't talk to that, but it was part of the quote, the quote itself included all the equipment that we need and the installation and training and all of that.
The quote in the contract are one and same, and all the, the equipment is listed in the back for the dollar amounts, if you can see the dollar amounts, Carol, you don't see?
I, I see a dollar amount, I'm, I'm looking at the, the narrative part of it, so I just.
Well, that's the, I think you're, oh, the narrative of the proposal, of the quote, or you're looking at the RCTV proposal? I think you're looking, I can't see it.
I can see this.
Yeah, I think the other document you're looking at is the quote, the, the request for quotes, that was sent out by the town. The document with the prices on it is the result of the quote, the contract. The other part I think you're looking at in here is the proposal that we sent out, that they responded to, and you'll see, well, actually, it's their narrative too. It's their narrative in response to our quote, I guess is what it is. So it outlines the scope of work, which was what we gave them, dear Mr. Senator, like, yeah, it's, so their, their narrative is essentially just describing our scope of services as well as still.
I'm just, I'm just looking at this installed provided equipment, so I just wanted to make sure that we.
It's that their narrative and it puts our scope in their narrative is what they do.
So, so Michael, can you clarify that at all?
Um, what can I do to help you? What, what's the clarif- I'm sorry, I didn't quite, what's the clarification you need?
Certainly, under the scope of services letter, so scope of services number three, A.
Yeah, bear with me, I'm sorry, I didn't have your RFQ, here it is, there it is, okay, under scope of services, section three.
A.
She's responding, she's asking a question about your, about the contract, not about the RFQ.
Yeah, I see, okay, you're talking, alright, three installation procedures, you're saying?
It says installed provided equipment?
Yep.
Yes?
I'm just wondering if that's part of, just confirming that that's part of the quote, that the equipment is part of the quote.
Yes, that, that, that is it, that is the equipment that's referenced in the quotation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, anybody have any other questions?
Peter, it looks, seeing this together, it looks what you were familiar with.
Yes, this looks. Yes. And for the record, the committee has not decided whether or not to go with the protection plans, we haven't discussed that yet, we'll discuss it on Wednesday at our meeting. So, we'll, that'll come out of a different line item, line item anyway, so it's not gonna affect this contract purchase. Actually, Michael, while I have you, is there a difference if we buy the protection plan at the time of purchase or within a month of purchase, is there a difference in price for those two?
No, not to my knowledge, the, the, the manufacturer doesn't require it, if you, if you were to buy it, like, say, within a month, I don't think this is a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you want a motion to sign, uh, quote, a contract?
Let the town administrators assign the, uh, official quote.
So you want a s- motion for the town administrator to sign?
Approval to.
The approval.
On behalf of the town, right?
On be- on behalf of the town.
Was that a motion?
Yes, there's some emotion in there, I could feel.
Is it a motion, a motion to approve the contract being authorized on sign?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just what he said.
Yeah, I thought so.
That's what I said.
Do we have a second?
Whitman seconds.
Alright, any other questions? Uh, roll call.
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye, I think that's the one to sign.
Have fun.
Oh, I've got.
I know.
Thanks for being on, Mr. Ridding, Riddinger?
Riddinger.
Riddinger.
Yes.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all so much. I'll take, I'll take care of getting this ordered as soon as I see the, uh, purchase order.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thirteenth?
Take care.
It's thirteen, yes.
Alright, Amy.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if you just put that with your package to sign documents.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, by the way, the thing that, do you want to consider adding this to the agenda, that population request by the town clerk?
Oh, yes, yes. I thought it was on the.
I don't think I need it.
I have a copy of the document.
I, I thought that, I had a number on it or something. He's having it on this.
No, I think she almost just got it today, so I don't think it could have made it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just add that. I mean, do you want to add that in now? It's, um.
That was convenient for you, yeah. You had a motion to add in a motion to.
Might as well.
That's the document.
Number at two forty five?
Whatever you guys want.
Well, should we just wait if it's?
Two forty A or whatever, you're gonna edit the end, I don't care.
What's the two ten? Previous one. Um, so yeah, we'll just. Number two forty A. And we're, we're doing, uh, we're adding this, this, uh, this is something that the state needs, um.
The liquor licenses.
For liquor licenses. It's come with the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission's twenty twenty-two seasonal population increase estimation form for the town as of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, acting on, under authority contained in MGL, chapter one thirty-eight, S seventeen, as amended, our board at a meeting held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one estimated the temporary increased resident population of Rutland as of July tenth, twenty twenty-two will be nine thousand four hundred and ninety. This estimate was made and voted upon by us at a meeting called for the purpose after due notice to each of the members of the time, place and purpose of said meeting, and after investigation and ascertainment by us of, of all the facts and after cooperative discussion and deliberation, the estimate is true to the best of our knowledge and belief. The above statements are made under the pains and penalties of perjury. If I can get a, uh, motion to sign.
It's approved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye.
Just for the public, what's the estimated population by, in the name, I think, I think.
Nine thousand four hundred and ninety.
So, Mr. Chairman, because you're gonna need two motions, one motion to add because it wasn't on the agenda, and a second motion to vote to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have made a motion to add it first. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a second?
Whitman seconds.
And any objections? Roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye, now that we've added it. Do we have any objections to the approval of it?
Nope, no objections whatsoever.
Alright. Apologize for that, but it had to be in the SAP, so. Alright. Um, Amy Evanowski, RRG submitted a letter of interest for the solar committee as the RRG representative. Appointment needs to be approved by the select board. Do we have a, anything on Amy's?
So I think this is pretty common for the, um, someone from the assessors office to be appointed to the, um, solar committee, so I think that this is just a formality, um, to do.
Yep.
Yep, I agree.
She's from Holden.
No, 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 she's, she's from, oh.
Okay.
She lives in Holden.
Oh, she lives in Holden.
She lives in Holden.
It's because it needs to be representative from the office.
Right.
So from the assessors, usually it's one of the assessors, either, um, from RRG. In the past, it's been someone from RRG. I don't, Peter, I don't know if you're here and can you clarify this?
The way I read, the way I read the charter, because I looked at this for the EDC issue, is that it could be a member, uh, an employee of the town, uh, could serve, and she's technically an employee of the town, could serve on a commission. There's, that's the way I read it.
I, I think that's the magic question, if I may, Mr. Chair, is, i- is she an employee of the town or is she an employee of RRG and, and effectively consulting to the town? Yes, I make people breathe deeply every time I speak, I know.
Was the previous member?
So, in the past, Diane, I don't know how, cause Diane was on before for the assessors, right, and?
I don't know where she lived. Uh, I don't know how much, in, in fact, when she was appointed, there was
She lived in Oakdale.
Only town residents were allowed. There wasn't even an exemption for, uh, for town employees. When, so basically, when she was appointed, there was a violation of the bylaw at the time.
So, I, I, and, and listening to what Peter says, I think he's correct. As I remember, it was a specific employee, and I don't think she's an employee, but as I look at it, she, you're right, RRG is a hired consultant. She's not technically an employee. So I don't know if she'd qualify under the way the bylaws.
So, as a full member, she wouldn't qualify. She absolutely could be ex officio as a non-voting member.
Yep. Yep.
Anybody, anybody in the world could be an ex officio, a non-voting member.
Which is what we ended up doing with the economic development, yeah. So.
I think it's important to have someone from the assessors with the knowledge for, I mean, I know currently, I don't think the town has a whole lot of solar projects coming
Yep.
through, but I know in the past, there have been a lot and the assessors really played a really valuable
Right.
role in that, that information and feedback and everything. So I don't know how the board, um.
Part, particularly, um, consult, or select board member, equipment is correct in that what the assessor's doing is they develop a pilot agreement, uh, between the town and the, the solar company for how the taxes will come in on that. So it is a pretty big role. I think ex officio is fine, but I think you're right. I think she, she wants to play a role, if a role happens, if something actually happens. Right now, there are no solar programs before us at the point, but there was one company kind of hanging out there and I frankly, don't know if it's moving or not moving at this point, it's.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may, there are, by memory, and that means it's wrong, but I can think of eight projects that have been stalled, eight solar projects that have been stalled in town. Some of whom have been given up on, like the one at the Heights, but there are, I remember seeing a table of, I think, eight from one particular vendor, and there are a couple others from other vendors that are just waiting for something to happen, either the electric company or the state to sort of push things along.
We're not.
So we could have a slew, a slew of them come in all at once.
I would, I would propose if we can bring around, but as an ex officio, I'd want to make sure that Amy's okay with that though.
I think she'd be fine with that. Yeah, I think she just wants to be able to serve the town because it's important to be on her. If she's ex officio or a regular member, I don't think it's critical of her. She just wants to know that she'll do what her job is to play a part in any solar projects, so.
So we, do we pay her or does the, uh?
She's paid for by the company, by RRG.
Okay, so she is on a.
That's why she's not a lawyer, yeah. Peter makes a good point. I think he's accurate.
So I guess at this point, we will just hold off on it and make sure it's okay and then bring it back.
I don't even know, do you have to? I'm not even sure. Uh, do you even need a vote for an ex officio member or is it somebody? I can just say, you know, would you be on it as an ex officio member? Is it required a vote of the board's selection for that?
Well, even on this one, it says, or town administrator, has our names and then.
I mean, you could vote.
How's the administrator, I don't think has the ability to appoint.
Right.
To, to, to a committee.
Whether.
Even an ex officio, yeah.
I.
I don't know.
Is, well, let's, let's put it this way, there is no bylaw today, it makes it very.
Well, I don't think there's any urgency, so I, I, I don't see a problem in bringing it back to the board as an ex officio.
Yeah, we can bring it back. Yeah, or you can just vote tonight as an ex officio as you want. Either way, we all do it.
Makes, makes the board feel.
The thing is, you bring it back, it's, maybe she won't, they won't want to do it. Talk to her first.
Well, she, she was willing to do it as a member, right?
As a member, yeah.
Right, but why do you think, what would be the objection?
Well, why would I want to sit on the board if I had no say?
At advisory capacity, because she's representing the assessors and.
Well, that's just me. I would want to vote. I would want to be able to say what I wanted and then vote. That's me, but I don't know how the rest of you guys feel.
I mean, I don't think there's any urgency, there's nothing coming up to this, so I mean, there's no problem.
There's no.
We can put it on the next agenda if that makes you comfortable.
I think that's a courtesy to her. I think we should just write a by her and.
Table.
Okay.
Alright. Would to accept Maya Risk Assessment Grant for DPW.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you skipped two forty two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, earmark grant for, uh, Woodhouse Roof, select board needs to vote to accept grant.
Six, so moved.
We don't, we don't have any documents on that. Oh, just a.
Should have the grant document.
Just, just the grant document.
I think that's right in front of me, so I'm looking at it, yeah.
Oh, this, oh, this is it, yeah. I thought that was the money.
Yeah, that's just a simple grant document, same grant document we get for all grants, it's just accepted, that's all.
Yeah, so I guess we'd be looking for a motion to accept and, uh, to allow the town administrator to sign.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I said.
And you did say that?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Whitman seconds.
Any discussion? Alright, roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye? Alright. Now, select board to accept Maya Risk Assessment Grant for DPW.
Mr. Chairman.
So there's no signature on this, right? It's just a statement.
Well, the various public safety departments all got together and agreed it, this year Joe would apply for the money and he received the grant.
So all we have is a copy of the statement, correct?
That's all. I don't know if we're looking for a copy of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is there a, any specific, like, approval form for it? On that we're supposed to be.
Well, this is not, you're gonna remember, this is not a state grant. This is from a private company, so it's not the same typical grant process we would get.
Yeah.
So I think it's just a signature on whatever document that they have, but, but this again, it's Maya's our insurance company that works for us, so that's.
Well, the only thing I see here is the state, so there's no.
Yeah. I, I just don't, I think.
So I think we're just accepting.
Yeah, we're just accepting the amount, yeah.
So we get a, uh, motion to accept.
Motion to accept the Maya grant as, I guess, as written.
Whitman seconds.
Any discussion?
Can I just say it to the public? It's a four thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollar, four cent grant for chainsaw kits and, um, confined space entry, um, protection, I guess, would be the best. Just for the public.
Alright, so roll call?
Clark eye.
Benoit eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye, thank you. Uh, draft ZBA new fee schedule. Select board vote to ratify the fee schedule.
And Mr. Chairman, as you know, um, our town planner's been working, uh, with the zoning board appeals on this issue. I know the finance committee's been very critically interested in this issue. Uh, the design here is to set the fees in such a way as they pay for all costs involved in that process. Effectively the same kind of process as, uh, we do with a planning commission. The only thing is that when we get to fall, we have to wait the fall town meeting before we can establish the account, because you can, according to our town account, you can only establish that type of account, um, at town meetings. So the money will go into general revenue, which is fine, it's just, and it'd be expended as it goes out, but this should cover all costs according to the zoning board appeals. And David, David George has worked extensively on this with them to make sure that it's, it's, it is reflective of the cost.
If I may.
Yes.
Tamika, I know you work with the ZBA also, and I know you've brought up concerns in the past about the fee schedule, and this, I know the ZBA has discussed it and it seems like it's sufficient to cover.
Sure, I'm thinking too, um, because I worked with Dave George to figure out how to get the cost of the legal lives down, what I could take out and what I had to keep in. And I think that's going to substantially lower costs down too. So that should be able to cover that cost and my time as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I, I followed some of it, but I just wanted to make sure that everything was.
Yes, it should be the cost going forward.
Thank you. And if I may, is the plan at some point to establish a fee or a, a account? Because I know at one of the meetings, there was
Yes.
conversation about what type of account could, could, should be established and everything, but for current, the fees would go into effect January first, but we wouldn't be able to establish the account until the spring town meeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
That is correct, and that is the plan.
So they'll just keep going in the general fund like they have been all this time?
Okay.
This is what we just.
Where is Peter coming? But we're, we're just skipping.
Oh, no, 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 it's supposed to A, B, A, B, C, C. We didn't have any of this. But thank you for asking, because I wanted to answer some of it.
So. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Peter trainates way, I think that problem may be more complicated than people are thinking about. In order to establish the fund, you need to pass a bylaw change. Cause we have a bylaw that defines, by state law, we have a bylaw that defines all the funds. And in order to add a new fund, to create a fund, you have to pass a bylaw change, which cannot take effect for up to three months after that. So I don't know that we can legally pass the bylaw change and put money into the account that doesn't exist yet at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, so I'm, I'm a little confused by that. So if the motion to create the bylaw was adopted, the bylaws, they have to go to, to regular elections, so they'll just pass it to me. If you had that prior on the agenda, the acceptance of bylaw, and then immediately after voted for the fund to be established, why couldn't you do that?
Because the bylaw isn't accepted until the AG approves it, and that takes up to three months.
So I guess.
And so it's not effective. It does not exist until the AG approves the bylaw change.
So all that means is that we would have to wait, the town account would simply have to wait until the bylaw was approved by the attorney general's office before you can open the account. So it would just take three months longer than what we're thinking, right?
Uh.
Cause once it was approved by the AG's office.
Yeah, but can, but, but can you legally put money into a fund that doesn't exist?
Well, as I say, you wouldn't put the money in until after the AG accepted the bylaw.
So, 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 I mean, maybe, maybe Karen can answer that.
There's, there's no money to put into it until there's a ZBA fee that gets collected. That's how it works. There's no money that funds that account until there's a ZBA fee collected.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, everything goes into the general fund and then we pay the bills from our budgeted.
Okay.
So the issue, Peter, we're not going to lose any money. The question is just, is it going to go into general fund revenues or into an account? So we just have to work out the account issue. And if it's three months after, that's fine, we'll have to work it out with you. The town account did not mention any about a bylaw approval to create that account, so I'm gonna have to talk to them about it.
That's how we have a planning board account and all the rec accounts and.
Yep. Yep. I'm not saying it's not true, I just said, mention it.
You know, I'm just.
So, through the chair, are these about the same fees that you're charging now?
No, the, the point of this is to.
So what are we charging now? I mean, I look at it as if I was to go for one of these, uh, residential special permit, but add three hundred dolla, it's going to cost me three hundred dollars to have it heard by the, uh, zoning board of appeals?
So, if I may, it, it came up in one of the FinCom, joint FinCom select board meetings, that the ZBA, ZBA budgeted accounts were overspent already before just a couple months into the fiscal year. And we realized that the fees that were being collected weren't paying for the legal requirement, legal posting requirements and everything that is required to even hold the hearings and everything. So Tamika and Dave, George and Ron worked together, I think, to develop fees that would cover the cost of the legal postings and a little bit of, um, the administrative side, salary side, um, and because currently the general fund was funding a resident going to, before the ZBA. So now the onus is on the resident or the, the business to fund that work to go before the ZBA.
Yeah, I can see the business, but a resident in town, I don't know, he should be getting it done for nothing, my, in my opinion.
But it still costs.
He pays taxes, he pays taxes.
But it costs something to post, so to legally for, to meet all the legal, legal requirements. The town as a whole should fit, foot the bill for me to go before the ZBA to put an addition on my house. I don't, I mean, this was kind of the conversation that came up in, in that joint FinCom ZBA meeting.
Right, no matter.
I think Tamika has one.
So I just wanted to add that it's very rare that a resident comes before the ZBA for a special permit. The majority of those go through the planning board and they're charged a fee through the planning board. Most of the special permits we see are commercial, like the cell tower. In this case, the ZBA is the granting authority. The most common one we get is the variance application, um, which basically means their billing permit's been denied, so if they want to try a second shot to get it, they pay the fee. Right now, it's one fifty, um, for a variance, and it's two twenty-five for a special permit. And right now, we do not distinguish between, uh, business. for a variance, and it's two twenty-five for a special permit. And right now, we do not distinguish between uh business and residential. So this kind of breaks it down where the, the commercial gets charged a little bit more. Um, but very rarely do we see a special permit for a resident.
Okay, no, just uh looking out for the, the homeowner that's trying to do it himself.
All right, so.
You, you must be thinking you live in a different town where we have plethora of monies in it.
No, I can, I can see paying the fees, but I, you know. Never mind, we won't go there.
All right, so. It's the board's pleasure. We just.
Peter says we can't legally do it.
Right, we can't.
No, this is just the fee schedule.
Right, this is just the schedule, so we're not setting up the account. We're just.
Where the money goes, you can, is not part of this tonight.
Right, so this is just approving the schedule, not the account.
Well, motion approve the schedule for the, new schedule for the ZBA as written on this document in front of me.
Wait one seconds.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Roll call.
Clag eye.
Benoid eye?
Wait, Benoid.
And Nichols eye?
Thanks, Tamika and ZBA and Dave and Ron for all the work, because I know it was something that kind of came up recently, like came to light recently and so.
Yep, and I'm working on, they're doing all the applications because they currently have all the old information, so we're making sure that everything's currently, you know, referencing the bylaw correctly, that the right fees are on there. Um, so I'm working with Anita and the chair of the board to get them done to, to make this available before the first of the year when fees come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the chair, I'd like to, um, we found some paperwork for item two thirty-nine, um, which we were going to put on hold because we did find it in our packets, but it was in the overall signature packet. Um, and that is the liquor license renewals, common vic re, um, renewals and um.
Actually, here's the document.
We have two people, um. License number, I'm not going to know the names. I think I'm going to. License number zero 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 one four dash PK dash one zero five six, Ravaskon.
Ravaskon, yep.
Ravaskon, five, um, twenty-nine East County Road. And license number zero 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 four zeros nine um dash HT dash one zero five six from Marsha Roberts Warrington and Chris J. Warrington, three forty-four Main Street.
Whoa, what, what was the address of the first one?
Five twenty-nine East County Road.
That's, that's the one right, that's the one right on the town line almost before Hubbardson.
Yeah, but they're not even open.
No, they're not.
That's, I was questioning because I don't, I don't think that's, I thought Vaskycon was closed and for sale, and I know, I don't think the um Rufus Putnam, Putnam House had renewed their license last year.
No, they didn't.
And so I don't mind, but I just, we don't have any documentation or paperwork. I just want to make sure that everything is.
For the server.
Uh, that was just in the, the sign, the back of the signs folder.
Um.
Oh, no, the other, the other, no, the other page was the uh, that was just on the other thing. That was not on.
Um, so we shouldn't be giving a license to something that's not currently open.
So this is, these are who failed, licenses who failed to renew for twenty twenty-two.
Or failed to renew.
Right.
So those are the two that are failed to renew.
Oh, yeah, this is something that's like, R W. Oh, no, that's a population increase. That's the one we see.
That's the population. So this, it's a renewal, okay, so like, so I don't know what we're getting to.
So maybe this is just acknowledging that we are aware that these two entities are not going to renew. I would rather hold if we kind of get clarification.
Well, she tapped it for a signature. That's what's confusing, but yeah, we don't really have.
Right, but it could be safe.
The new applications for the above mentioned are now occupied, used and controlled by the, yeah, this isn't, I think we're missing something.
Yeah, we'll hold off until we get more clarification from that one.
I think we're missing, so we'll take that back off.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, two ten.
See, your motion to sign the annual review for the town administrator.
Okay, do we have a second?
Wait one seconds.
Any discussion? So I, I know, I know we were um going to give you an opportunity to give us any kind of information before we.
Yeah, let me just, you know, I guess I would ask you this. As you know, I've sent out a, I, I was thinking about reading it, but I'm not sure there's a lot of point to it. As you know, I sent out a, a long list of town administrator annual review, things that I thought uh the achievements were, and I think it's extremely extensive uh over the far periods of time. They just act that, that that document should be attached to the review process. That has all the things that I believe I achieved over the last year.
Okay.
I think it reached for me with that document that I sent.
Sure. Does anybody have any objection to attaching?
No.
I mean, because there's a comment section anyway, so that would be appropriate.
Yep.
Yeah, no problem whatsoever.
So, you know, if you do have any other comments, Ron, you can get it back to us.
Well, I, I still would like to talk to individual
Yeah.
board members. I'm still kind of would like to hear, see the reviews of some of the individuals I haven't seen yet. I know that Skip hasn't done one, but still like to understand what those concerns were, what the possible scores might have been.
They're all right in there. You don't want to know my score wise.
Uh, yeah, I didn't, I don't know what it is, but I'll, I'll talk to Carol and have a discussion with Carol as well.
And then, um, then Carol and I will get together and just put a letter together, um, just on, on a plan and a timeline as far as addressing any board's concerns.
As you've seen, Mr. Chairman, some of the things are already addressed. One of the things you wanted more extensive reporting at meetings, which you saw tonight, was much more extensive. I had thought that you guys would have liked it in, in written form and not take enough time in the meeting, but, but you asked me to do bullets, and then if you had further questions from that, department head meetings have been scheduled and set for specific dates, so I'm trying to respond to the things I've heard already and trying to move forward.
So your department head meetings, selectmen, welcome to come to?
Um, I really hadn't given any thought, to be honest with you. It's, it's not something that normally occurs, but I think it would make my department heads be a lot quieter, if that would have been. It's not normal, the norm. Um, if you would like to come.
No, I'm just asking. I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and I, and I've said that, I'm going to, one of the things I'm going to have a conversation about because I don't understand it is one of the comments to select board members that where members were afraid to talk to selectmen, and I don't understand. I've had a number of conversations with, with my managers who claim that that's, that they've never said that, but I, I only talked to one or two of them. Skip, I haven't talked to all of them, so. So we need to have that conversation.
And I said to you before, with the pre, previous police chief,
Yep.
and yes, the police are talking to me anyway. I don't know about the rest of them, but they're talking to me.
I don't know why any, I don't know why any of them wouldn't, because I've never said to any of them not do that. I'll state it again clearly so that it's very clear.
If you were here in the past, you would have said, yeah, okay. Somebody from the police department is telling the select board something, and it's not, shouldn't be being told by them, it should be told by the chief, so.
It should come through the.
And, and things have changed in town since that's happened.
If you want to just. And then we'll attach that as well.
So.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be a discussion at my next department meeting, just so you know, because it, I, I don't understand why that was even a comment, but that's for another time.
All right, so the plan has been signed. Um, we agree to attach, so Ron, do you want me to?
This is the, this is the document. If you want to attach it and stuff, it's fine.
And then as long as the board has no objection, um, as I said, we'll give Ron some time if he has any other comments.
Yeah, I'm going to be honest with you. I, I, the budgets are all coming in now.
Yeah.
So your negotiations, I'm not going to have meetings with probably the selectmen until after I get back from vacation uh at the beginning of January sometime. That's when we're going to start having those meetings.
But, but uh, Carol and I will put together some kind of a plan with the timeline of just to address any of the con, the board's concerns.
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody on board with that? Any other comments?
Yep.
All right, so roll call. Roll call, I'm sorry. Do you have another comment?
No, no, go ahead. I'm not, I'm not going to bother right now, but I, I, I need to have some conversations on the communication issue with individual members and how that works, because it, it's somewhat confusing to me, that process, but well, that's something I need to talk with individual members about.
Okay.
Okay, so roll call.
Clag eye.
Benoid eye?
Wait, Benoid.
And Nichols eye? All right. Um, Ron already gave us an update on the economic development website and the changes on the.
No changes on the website.
Um, boards and commissions, we addressed some of those issues. Uh, human resources. I think we're.
To say that, truthfully, I'm going to have to look at, uh, you know, we do have a human resource book that's been kept in the treasurer's office. I need to spend some time with Becky, but we do have a full book of human resource stuff. Uh, so I feel like that may be in pretty good shape, but I do want to review it because I don't know how old it is, so I need to take a look and see what it says. But it is in place.
Speaking of that, so you saw the information regarding the COVID um medical leave.
Yeah, I did, and I understand that, yeah. And then truthfully, it, it's very confusing because there's federal policy, state policy, and then some towns are doing their own local policies. But yeah, that's been discussed. There's, one employee took either one or two days that we're going to have to look at reimbursement. I've had a discussion with that department head about that specific person, but we, we, we haven't had much of an issue with it, but we did have employee, we were lost one or two days, so we need to see about that, but thank you.
Okay, so.
That was a state law, that the state gave a longer period of time uh to, to be able to utilize money for that, and they're going to reimburse it, so thank you. That was a very interesting letter that I saw.
Think that's in effect until, is it April?
April, yes.
I think.
Yeah, they, yeah, they looked at it for a while. Yep.
All right, um, did I go through all of them? And the budget, um, I know you requested the bud, the, uh, the budgets for the departments, so.
Yeah, I should be getting, uh, those, you know, those are starting to come in today, and they should be in the next couple of days. They should be complete, and I'm taking them. As you know, there's two processes. So I sent on Excel spreadsheet like you got, Mr. Chairman, for each individual department, and then there's a narrative that we had with it. Uh, those are all starting to come in now, so I'm trying to do it. Instead of getting hit all at once, I've been trying to do it as they come in. Um, so DPW is a big one that came in today. Uh, police department, I talked to both chiefs. They sent a reminder of the deadline, which was supposed to be by end of today. Couple of departments have asked me for small extensions, so to speak, but they're all moving forward and I feel good about the process, and they're all going into a master Excel spreadsheet, which is what you see in the front of your budget book, is that full master Excel spreadsheet. And that's what Karen gets too, when the finance committee gets the Excel spreadsheet, but they get, you know, all, everything is in the book, so you get everything in the books as well. So, you know, I've actually, this year, unlike last year, I asked the boards and commissions to look at their budgets. They're very small, they're one or two lines, like, you know, maybe a thousand bucks or something. But I at least wanted to hear from them if they thought there was some real need to increase their lines. For instance, zoning board of appeals, we talked about tonight. They, you know, I wanted to give them an opportunity to tell me that costs or something have gone up, so um, I'm finding that those are the ones that are not coming in because they're not employees. They, they got them and they're dragging, and I'm going to have to ask them one at a time, and if they don't respond, I'll just put in the amount from last year, but it's sort of a benefit to respond if they think there needs to be an increase.
If I may, I think that that's one of those places that they can ben, the boards and commissions can benefit, having that relationship with you as a town administrator is, because they don't necessarily have the guidance um for the budget. You know, they do it and the money's just been there, but as far as like looking at the fee schedule or what their typical expenses are on a yearly basis or whatever.
Truthfully, most of those is really Tamika. You know, Tamika's around as boards and commissions, that's the only cost, so they just need to talk to Tamika about the hours and how much they need, and do they have enough to meet it this year, and do they think they might need a small increase next year? That's most of what those are. The other part of that is, you know, ads in the newspapers, they're going to have a hearing or something like that, but it's very, very small numbers. Like I said, if they don't do it, I'll individually call them and work it out, but it, it's um like I said, it's, there's only a number of departments that have it, and it's small stuff. And Peter, for instance, conservation commission does a good job, so I'll be looking for Peter from that, but it's pretty basic. And some boards and commissions don't even ask for money because they get it from their own little funds, right? So they don't even have to ask, so.
And I know you guys are meeting Thursday, just on a few items. How soon do you think we, because, you know, we want to meet, the boards to meet as well that have discussions through the process. How soon would you want us to participate in any meetings with the, just to.
For the what?
Typically, we'd meet till I give you some kind of budget to talk about.
I was going to say, not until he's finished with what he's got.
Right, but, but so after he gets his budgets and he meets with the, with um all the departments, how quick is the finance committee going to meet with?
So I think what would happen, just to kind of give you my clarity, is that when I submit a budget to the finance committee, I also send it to you guys as well. At that point, you would set up some dates to review it, but the, the, you got to remember, the first step in the process, the way the finance committee does it, is they meet with all the department heads one-on-one, and I think in the past that the select board has always been invited in that process if they want to come.
Right.
So you guys would go, if you want to go, I know that Leah's been on a number of those meetings. Um, but you could go to the finance committee meetings and listen in and hear what they have to say, and I think they let you ask questions. You just can't vote, but, but, so you are going to be kind of involved on a regular basis each to those sections of budgets. I don't know what else you could do, but that, that's usually the.
But I just wondered when you're going to start, when you would start the process.
It, it's going to all depend upon when we get the budget, and I think
Yeah, definitely.
Probably sooner than later because we waited way too long last year.
Right, well, that's my concern. I want to make sure that we're moving on as soon as possible.
We can't do that.
Yeah, and, and I'm going to be blatantly honest, the big issue that, there's a couple of big issues that hold up finalizing the budget process. One is the insurance cost, which we always get late from Maya and from them. Two is the school number, which they drag their feet and they make us like last of all the towns usually. So those are two big numbers, but I'm, I'm going to make it clear from my point of view, I'm not putting in, unless, unless the schools abide by the two and a half thing we did, I'm not putting in their number like I did last, and that was devastating, and I, I think it, they need to put, we need to put in a reasonable number and not just go with this crazy number if that's what they come out with. Now, this year, hopefully they don't come out with a crazy number, but, but that was, in my mind, you know, using their, their, you know, give me everything number, and then cutting all the departments, and in my mind, was a horrible process, and I don't want to do it again, so I'll use a more realistic number. And then the, the question is going to be, if town meeting votes for some extraordinary number, then we're going to have to make our cuts to the, whatever that number is. Now, we will consider those cuts before town meeting, but.
It's all the iterations of the budget.
Yeah, we'll have discussions about that, but we're not going to make those cuts until town meeting forces us to make those cuts. We're going to, it's going to be a different process this year than what we did last year. And I think last year was, was very bad for employee morale, and it was just a miserable process, and we're going to change it this year, so I think it'll be better.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions here?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait one seconds.
Roll call?
Clag eye.
Benoid eye?
Wait, Benoid.
And Nichols eye? Thank you.